And now here's Casey Ingram.
Well, welcome, folks. Another beautiful Wednesday here. And today we have a very special show. We have our inaugural candidate exchange. All candidates in Martin County have been invited to this, and I have two in one race that have accepted this invite today. But before we get into the show, I'm going to move quickly here at the front because we have a lot of things to cover this hour. I just want to thank my sponsors very quickly, Indian Town Marine Center and Indian Town Marina. Folks, I'm just going to briefly say it's hurricane season. We're all seeing what's happening to the south of us. The strongest hurricane on record, Cat Five, has actually appeared in June. So get your reservations today to have a safe and secure place to store your boats during hurricane season. Indian Town Marina or Indian Town Marine Center, very safe inland on the Okeechobee Waterway. So today with our inaugural candidate exchange, we have with us District Five Martin County Board of Commissioners. We have everybody except for the incumbent, which is Ed Campy. Ed is out with on vacation with his family this week. But we have the two challengers, Bruce Nathan and Michael Circus. The rules of this are very, very simple. We have all the questions ahead of time. I asked the candidates to each submit each other three questions, which they have done. I've also asked the public to submit questions, which we will get to as time permits. I promise you, if we run out of time in this hour with those questions, Michael will be back on the show July 24th, Bruce will be back on the show August 14th, and I will ask those questions then. So for whatever reason, we don't get to them today, they will, they will answer them at another date. So it's very simple. We're going to let these candidates actually talk about where they stand on issues with their questions. We're going to open up first. We had a coin tossed. Michael Circus is going to go first. Bruce Nathan will have the closing statement. They will have a one-minute opening statement, two-minute closing statement. So I'm going to start with you, Michael Circus.
I appreciate the opportunity this morning. I want to thank Bruce. It's not often that we get to sit down and talk. So it's great that people get the option to hear from, from two different candidates and, and get our perspectives and make an educated decision from there. Because that's, that's really, that's important to me. My name is Mike Circus. I'm running for county commission District Five. I could bore you with the whole longevity of how long I've lived here, but it's the same as pretty much everybody else. We're all telling the same story with different faces. So I would just simply say that, you know, in this race, we obviously have very different priorities, very different perspectives. Bruce, Ed, and I are three different individuals, three different mindsets. And I mean, my, my philosophy is on a long-term approach. I want to make sure that my kids and my kids' kids can afford to stay in the community. And I'm very concerned that we are not on that right track. So that's why I'm running for county commission. And I just appreciate the opportunity to come in today and, and answer some questions.
Bruce Nathan?
Well, I'm, my name is Bruce Nathan, and I'm very happy to be here. Thank you very much, Casey, Michael. So I am, I'm a person who has now run, this is the third time I've run for something. So ran for the Senate in 16, ran for governor in 18. And now I run for Martin County Commissioner. Everybody said to me in the beginning, why don't you run for commissioner? Start with and then, and then do the other. I said, no, no, I've got to start big. That's the way I always have been, start big. But I'm only doing this now because I see the encroachment and the problems coming into Martin County and the, and the, and the development and the, and the traffic and everything else that's happened while I've been here since August of 2000. So it's, it's something, you know, probably close and near and dear to my heart, only because I've got, I've got a farm where I've rescued over 300 animals. And we've got Palm City Farm Camp as well. And as a, look, as a veteran, as a doctor, father of six children, it's so important for me to make sure that somebody's going to get in there and be that steadfast, hold the ground, make new waves. Because we can't let this go the way it's continuing. We have to stop it and stop it now.
Thank you very much, Bruce Nathan. And for folks that are listening and ones that will tune in later, if you're listening on the radio, this will also be on my YouTube channel, The Casey Ingram Show, within the day. So you'll be able to watch it if you miss something here this morning. So we're going to go back and we're going to start with the questions. The first one for Michael from Bruce. Michael, what qualifies you, solutions to our problems-wise, to be a better candidate than Bruce?
Sure. First of all, I think when you're talking about a county commissioner, it's all about a prioritization. You know, you're one of five voices. So you need to bring forward a prioritization. You need to be able to bring forward an initiative. You're looking for a public service job. And in order to show the qualities or show that you're qualified as a public servant, then you need to show that you've done public service. I've been with the Martin County Farm Bureau, I'm former vice president with them, as well as chairman of their Young Farmers and Ranchers Committee, I'm former legislative coordinator-director for the, the committee of Martin County Farm Bureau, their, their inaugural committee, not to mention Republican Party. I'm a former treasurer with them here in Martin County, as well as their community outreach and volunteer organization. And today, I'm a historian as for practice. I'm a historian. I do a lot of research in Martin County Black Heritage Initiatives and actually just dropped off a, a package, the second National Registrar Historic Places application that my research has been in support of, along with several other historians and researchers, just in Martin County. So I've demonstrated over the last five to eight years, not even getting into my actual advocacy on individual rights, business and consumer rights, and obviously the financial aspect of our county. I mean, I've been advocating in front of the county for six years, eight years now, and I've been mildly successful, reality is. And if I can do that with very limited resources and doing this essentially as a volunteer, then I think to myself, yeah, you're qualified. Think of what you can do if it's a full-time position, you add an office to work out of and actual resources. If you'd be mildly successful in the last half decade, just doing this for fun, then if you made a job out of it, you can do some wildly successful things for the county. So I can get into specifics if you'd like. Looking into our comp plan, we have to have incremental growth. We cannot continue to have this, this massive 6,000-foot jump, or these PUDs that are being developed, creating individual urban service boundaries outside of what our traditional urban service boundary is. Getting into finances, I can go all day long on the finances with you. Our debts today are no different than what they were 10 years ago, after we borrowed coming out of the housing bubble crisis. But our debt, our, our collections, our financial collections have more than doubled. So we're spending money on assets that look great on paper, look great in the community, but we're burdening our future generations with, with just no reserves, a huge debt, and quite frankly, an overhead that cannot be maintained. So I mean, we can go off on that one. And just individual rights and individual liberties. We've talked how many times in the past about businesses that have been targeted because they just aren't the flavor of the week. And that's not how you, you look out for a level of quality of life for your people. If somebody builds a business that is perfectly legal in your community, you don't target them because a vocal minority comes out of the woodwork one day and says, let's make them go away.
That's right.
That's, that's just not looking out for individual rights and liberties. And these are the issues that I want to address here in the county.
You have a response with that, Bruce?
Well, that wasn't even an answer to the question. So that's, you know, what makes him a better candidate than me? That's the question. But that was so politically well-done. I won't say. That's, that's a forte on your side, because you're, you're better at politics than I am. No doubt. You've been doing more political things than I have. And because I just did the, the run for the Senate and the, and governor, and for, and I would do it for probably a year prior, a little over a year prior each time, just to get in there, get my feet wet, see what I can do. If you don't have a million dollars in your, in your coffer to run for either of those seats, you're not going to make it. But I didn't learn that until after I ran for governor. So that's okay. So, but the idea is, what would make you the better candidate than me? So me being the, the person who has lived here, who has worked my entire life, since I was eight years old, never had only one job, usually had two. So even right now, I work as, as a farmer on my farm, as Palm City Farm Camp and Nathan's Family Farm. And when you have over 300 animals, that's a day and night job. It's 24/7. So, and, and as a physical therapist, working for South Florida Orthopedics, working full-time, that, and a full schedule, I'll leave here today, I go, I see 14 patients today. This is, and that's what I do. This is what makes me who I am. And this is what makes me be able to solve the problems in Martin County. Because I don't see things like normal people do. I don't see things in that direction. I see things as a doctor, a physical therapy, of how can I solve the problem for this person that has this problem, that's had this problem for years now, and then they come see me. So, and after 30 days, I can get them better. So I solve the problems, I make the cures. That's what doctors do. We've all seen doctors. You've seen a doctor, you've seen a doctor. Everybody in this room has seen a doctor, at least once, if not multiple times, over your period of life. And you're not going to go see that doctor without the trust of that doctor and making sure that that doctor is going to be able to cure whatever your problem is. You want it right then and there. So me too. So are the people listening. We want this done now. So not to say that government's going to be able to work fast and make it happen, but I tell you, I have the solutions to the problems because I have the experience and the knowledge of my years of doing things to make sure that I can get there. That's the important part.
So Bruce, that brings us to our first question from Michael to you. Please share with us your top three priorities and specifics on how you plan to achieve them.
Well, they're pretty equal. So, and it's, you can say taxes, blue-green, toxic algae, and the growth. So all three of those things are pretty equal. So let's start with the taxes. Now, taxes is what's something that when we're in a Republican county, we're not supposed to be taxed so much. We're supposed to have the idea of, let's less taxation, let's figure out a way where we can spend only what we're taking in, and that's it. And then not raise the taxes for, to, to make it more. So how do you find the solution to that problem? Okay? And that's, that's one of the key things. So I have the solution. So I can go easily with that one, just, just off a side note, I can go to the blue-green toxic algae. So we've had this problem now for years and years. We haven't, we don't, all of a sudden, we don't have it so much this year, right now. So nobody thinks about it. That's the way the world works. So nobody, but you know what? When it pops up next year, and the dogs are getting sick when they're going near the, near the water, and all of a sudden, people can't go in the water anymore, and the signs are up, you can't go in because toxic algae, well, then that's a problem. All right? So I just talked to somebody even just yesterday, okay? Person who is also a doctor, and we think of things in a, in a microcellular level. And if we don't do it and fix it at the microcellular level, not the Army Corps of Engineers level, but the microcellular level, we'll never get it fixed. So it takes scientists to go in there and fix this problem. And that's my whole thing, is I have, I have a dozen scientists right now, right now, on standby, to, ready to tackle this problem. Because I was going to do that first thing becoming governor. And then when I didn't get elected there, I was going to do it first thing with the Department of Agriculture Commissioner at that time, who was a Democrat, and then poo-pooed the whole idea and thoughts, because, just because I was a Republican. So, and that's, and that was just awful. Because we had it ready. Volunteers. So, and this is something I can enact. I don't have to, I, because I have the gravitas as a Martin County Commissioner, I don't have to ask the other commissioners permission, because it's going to be voluntary. So this is something that can be done. I can enact this myself and put this together. Now, what does that do for us? That brings in a lot of federal money. Because guess what? The feds have been spending money on this, on this St. Lucie River and our toxic algae for years. And millions and millions of dollars have gone there and done nothing. Well, you know what? Now it's going to come back to Martin County. And we can take that money and utilize that money for us. Then we're going to start to sell the whole product that we have here over to the West Coast, because the red tide that's over there is awful, just as bad or even worse. So they have that same problem over there, but in a different capacity. So we take this, this concept here, we bring it over there. Now Martin County's on the map. Because the 67 counties that we have here, Martin County's now number one, because we solved this problem. Okay? So that's, that's number two. Third thing, the amount of growth that we have in this county, even though we were just at a forum with, with Campy and Smith the other day, Circus and I were there, and they said, oh, it's only 2% growth. Yeah, that's a bunch of bull. So we've had, we have, we see all, we're looking all around us at all the growth that's going on here. This is, this is, it's an intense amount of growth all over the place. They're taking animals and displacing them. They're in backyards of people that have never seen this kind of animal before. And it's really ridiculous what they're doing to us. So, so it's stopping that growth. And there's ways to do it. Because if you look at a contract, and you look at an amendment and how things are done, you can change it. You can walk it back. So, and I can tell you that from experience of what I did, when I ran for governor, I ran as a Republican. The next day, I turned to a new party affiliate. Because it didn't say, if I don't turn to a new party affiliate, I couldn't continue running as governor. I took it, I filed a motion, I went to court in Tallahassee. So I took that motion to court, judge saw me within the week, because it was called an emergency motion, had to get taken care of right then. Three Department of Election lawyers came against me, lowly me. So what they did was, they said, you know, we can't do that because we can't get his name on the entire ballot of all the 67 counties. We can't do it. So the judge had to rule in favor of them. But guess what they did? They now, because I went to the supervisor of elections here, to see if I could do the same thing again, and turn to NPA, if I, if I happened to lose this against Campy or Circus, and they said, no, they changed the law. Because of what I did, they had to change that law. That's, that's how powerful I am because they saw that I was there and I did this to them. So I'm just lowly me, did that. So these are my three priorities to get this done, and I'll get them done.
Thank you, Bruce. And, and Michael, I'm sure you want to respond to that, and we'll move on to the next question afterwards.
Well, I was just going to quickly, as far as responding, because you brought up a very valid point. You were looking for specifics in the first question. And I would just give you, since we talked about taxes and finances, I would give you the specific that yesterday morning, the fiscal year '25 budget was released for Martin County. So I was printing that up and up to about midnight last night, just starting to get through it. About 570 pages of expenditures, $672 million, which is about a $30 million increase over last year, $181 million increase in the last five years. And I was going through this budget, there's a couple of things that were conspicuously missing. There's a $20 million train station. We already know what the principal, what the interest is going to be. We already know that we're going to borrow it, or we've made the promise we're going to borrow it. But that's missing out of the budget. And even looking at our general reserves, there's almost $3 million from the land purchase in Palm City that is anticipated, not actually achieved yet, but an anticipated repayment going into our general reserves. So right off the bat, we're looking at a budget with a $23 million question mark, essentially, as to what's actually going to take place. I mean, these are specifics that are buried in our budget today that are 100% controllable on our part. And three weeks ago, we had the lobbyist for Martin County who represents us both in Tallahassee and Washington DC, telling us it's time to get a handle on your money at home, because the free money, specifically out of Tallahassee, but also by extension, DC's also clamping down their pocketbooks as well. Free money is not going to be flowing in anymore. So something we can control on our home front, if we get our finances under control, any anticipated income we might get from the state or the federal level becomes a bonus that you can use to pay down your debts or bolster your reserves. But anticipating or hoping that we're going to get these monies and use those with no guarantees, that just leaves us in limbo in the future.
Michael from Bruce, on your website, I cannot get a sense of where you are working at this time. Can you please tell me your job status?
Sure. I'm a, I'm a self-employed carpenter. Essentially, I've taken the, the concept of day labor, labor force. Instead of me showing up to labor force and saying, hey, I got nothing to do today, why don't you send me somewhere to work? What I do is I've created an S Corporation, and I've networked with contractors that I've worked with in the past. And I call them up, and I say, hey, Jason, listen, I got Monday, Wednesday, Friday available this week. Says you need, need an extra set of hands? He'll tell me, yeah, help me out here, help me out there. And in addition to that, I'm a substitute teacher for the First Baptist Christian School here in Stewart. So sometimes I'll work one day or two days, depending on the need. This fall, actually, from August 2nd up until the end of September, I'm doing two months covering the eighth grade teacher in all of the, the middle school history classes, and she'll be out on maternity leave. So congratulations to her, by the way. So that's what I, that's what I do as far as income. And I treat it like a job, but I'm working on my master's program. So what I do is I set a day aside where I don't get paid, I'm paying the school for the, the tuition. But I treat it like a job and set, set aside my time to ensure that I can do my research necessary and get my assignments done in a timely fashion. So, but that's my work.
Good question. Bruce, on your signage, you have stated, stop the growth and stop the development, get to your destination quicker, or a variant of this. Why these messages, and how do you plan to achieve this?
Well, just as part of what I said in the last statement, was the idea that the amount of building that's going on here is, is, is so reprehensible to us. Because we, we all moved into Martin County, thinking it was going to be a nice, small, not Palm Beach County, not St. Lucie County, just not Broward. So, and, and we, we believed that this county was going to stay small and be able to, you know, keep the farmlands to farmlands and keep everything the way it was. But that's not the way our commissioners want it right now. They want to take money from the developers and be able to develop more land. Because what's going to happen is they, they see that as a revenue stream, not only for their political ambitions and their, and their campaigns, which is happening, but it's also the tax venue that's going to come from all of these houses that will come in. So, and they, they figure that this revenue is going to come in and make it so it's going to be that much higher for us and be able to make some of that money back. And will they end up paying off some of the debt that Michael talked about? Probably not. They'll probably just find a way to spend it somewhere else, because that's what they do. So that's, they, that's what they always do. So I, I think the idea is to make it so if we slow or stop the growth in, as a whole, take down all the rezoning signs, get rid of all of the, the new zoning, and go back to our old zoning laws that we had, that's going to make it so our, that's going to actually decrease the amount of people starting to come in, decrease our traffic, it's going to, and then it's going to make it better. We heard from Campy the other day. He said 47,000 cars are coming in every morning, no matter how you slice it. And that's, that's just the way it is. They're, they're leaving the county or coming back in this county just to work, just to go to work or come back from work. Well, listen, if we have more coming in, because we have more development, that's just going to make it even worse. And, and we already had this conversation about Martin Highway, of how some people down there, we were at Stewart West Cobblestone, Michael and I, on Saturday. So do they, do they want to make that into a four, four lanes? And the idea is no. Because all that does is open up the idea for more development there. So if we open that to four lanes, and, you know, make it so it's less traffic, then it's more of a problem. And again, and it's multi-multi-millions of dollars. Some of us will be on, on us, some of it's going to be on state, some of us on federal. So, but we don't want any of it. So, just like Brightline, we don't want any of it.
And I assume he didn't have a follow-up question, because he answered what he does for a living. If you had a comment on that, now's the time to share it. I don't want to cut you off.
So that's okay. So, so, well, you know, it's, it's my belief as, as a person, I've always had somebody that I have to report to. It's my belief, when you're a worker, for as many years as I've been a physical therapist, I, I did a small time where I was, had my own physical therapy business, as well as working for somebody else. Because you always want to have those double-stream incomes, especially when you have six children. So, but that's, that's the idea, is to make it so that we can, we can focus on making sure that money's coming in. So I'm, I'm a bigger believer than just having a subchapter S and, and being able to run around and, and do political things, being able to make sure that money is coming in. You know, it's, and it's, for me, it's, I don't, I don't have a, a family stream of money. Every, every, we paid our own mortgage, we bought our own, we, we strapped ourselves in debt, got ourselves out of debt, got a house, got a farm, started our own business. And this is without family money. This is our own money, okay? Hard-working money between my wife, who's an occupational therapist for the Florida Children's Therapy Services, and myself. And that's how I met her. So we were both pediatric therapists in the beginning. Now she still is, and I'm working for South Florida. So, so it's the idea that that's how the money stream comes in for us, and not family money. Because I just don't believe in that. Because then the family wants you to become Martin County Commissioner. And then what happens is then the family's going to start guiding you along your path. It's, it's, it's my big belief and idea that at 37 years old, the wisdom is just not there. I'm sorry. So you have wisdom only with age, only with time, that you've learned things over the period of time. At 50, 60 years old, you've seen what happens, you know what's going to happen next, and you can only stop it if you know what's going to come next. And that's wisdom. And there's not one person who's 50, or 60, or 70, or 80, who's going to tell you it's any different.
Michael, I'm sure you want to respond.
Well, I'll quickly respond to that. But I'll just say that our founding fathers wrote our constitution, we're all dead not long after I was, not long after I'm, I'm at my age now. So this idea that you got to wait till you're 60, 70, or 80, I would take a look at our two choices for president, and are you otherwise? Wisdom comes a lot earlier in life through experience, not just simply surviving from one moonrise to the next. But I do want to highlight something you said about the current commissioners and growth and development. Because it kind of got buried in the headline, and you're 100% accurate on it. I think everybody needs to know this. We talk about these new growth developments and all these, these rural lifestyle plans that are coming out. And if you go back to the meetings in December, you listen to the two incumbents that are currently running, and they were arguing with each other how they were going to spend the anticipated tax dollars because of the new rural lifestyle developments. You can go back and watch the meeting, and you'll see them go back and forth over this. And that's really, to your point, you're 100% accurate. They love the idea of these, these new growth patterns coming out, because they see that as anticipated tax revenue, money they're going to spend in the future. And again, you know, going back to that philosophy of, don't spend it if you don't got it. They're already talking about how they want to spend money they anticipate coming in, which hasn't actually materialized. So I really think, you know, you made that point in, in your, your discussions about the growth and development. And I really want everybody at home to listen to that and hear that out. Whether they like your philosophy or like my philosophy is irrelevant on this particular point. I want everybody to understand that that is where we stand today. So you need to question if that's the logic you want to continue with.
Yeah. And I think, well, the thing that we both agree on is Campy's got to go. I call him Campy, because the CCI in, in New York is an Italian name, and he puts it in the chuh. So I call him Champy. So Champy's got to go, Smith's got to go. So we're, we're in total agreement there. Because they're, they're too long incumbents that stay there and want to stay there for longer and longer. And, and we would give ourselves term limitations, you know, two terms, that's it, we're out. And that's, and that's the way it should be. So, you know, so whoever is listening, the person not to vote for is that Champy. So it's either Bruce Nathan or Michael Circus.
Bruce Nathan, Michael Circus. Next question for Michael from Bruce. At our most recent forum, you mentioned that you had been to Washington DC and Tallahassee. What was the purpose of these trips, and what did you resolve specific to help Martin County?
Sure. So after, I used to be in the Navy. I was medically discharged, which isn't something I was terribly in, in favor of. And as a coping mechanism, I began smoking cigars. It's a terrible habit, but if that's the only one I have in life, then that's not too bad. So for a long time, it's, I've been a consumer of cigar tobacco. And unfortunately, this is something that's been targeted heavily by the state government, as well as the federal government, to the point of really crippling the industry. And here in Florida, that's, that's a huge economic driver. It's a multi-billion dollar industry. And more importantly, as a consumer, I know that trying to afford a $10 cigar once or twice a month is not always the best thing, not always the easiest financial thing to do. So when I see federal initiatives and state initiatives that are going to drive that price to $30, it's like, okay, this is one of the few coping mechanisms that I enjoy in life. I don't want to see it go away. So back in 2019, December 2019, I took a proposal up to Tallahassee, sat down with Anthony Sabatini. It was actually a federal measure that I was trying to address, but I wanted the State House of Representatives to put forward a non-binding resolution telling the federal level, hey, you federal delegates from Florida, this is an important industry, try to protect it. And I was very blessed, because Sabatini, in less than four minutes, he read it, it's a two-page proposal. He read through the thing, and he sticks his head out the door and looks at his legislative aide, Jason, and says, get this thing into drafting. And it became House Memorial Bill 1093, which was great, because we can take that memorial bill, and we submitted it into the National Registrar in DC as a support mechanism for the federal bill, which was Senate Bill Nine. Was really, what I really enjoyed about that was about six months later, we all know what happened in March of 2020, right? Everything went haywire. So I had meetings that we're supposed to have with Justin Amash in DC, and Jim Jordan, both with the Freedom Caucus, got canceled. I was able to do it through phone and do it remotely, which was fantastic. But I was looking forward to the DC trip. Nevertheless, in late April, early May of 2020, I get a text message from a buddy of mine in Orlando, and say, hey, did you just see this video? And he sends me a shot of this video. It's DeSantis coming out of his office in Tallahassee following a meeting with Trump, where he said, I have three priorities that I'm worried about. And he's talking about, you know, obviously the pandemic, and talking about medical issues. But he says, hey, you know, we got financial concerns too. Since the feds are about ready to cripple a multi-billion dollar industry in the state of Florida, we need you to stop. And it just turned out, it, we were approaching it from a legislative aspect, but I was working with also a team doing it from a legal standpoint. Cigar Rights from America and the Premium Cigar Association were both suing the federal government, the FDA, for overreach in their practices. And the FDA ended up losing their lawsuit. So we were fortunate in, I guess it was about a year ago, to find out that we had positive resolution on that. And the FDA's attack dog's been pulled back. And, you know, going back to the Tallahassee, for example, in 2022, there was another bill, this one would take away the state's preemption on tobacco consumption and allow counties and municipalities to regulate smoking in an outdoor setting the way they see fit. And this was spurred by Joe Gruders and Randy Fein. They were both trying to put forward an ordinance that was in Sarasota, the city of Sarasota. They were sued because they said you couldn't smoke on the beach. And I fully appreciate they were trying to attack litter. That was their concern, the cigarette butt litter in the beaches. So I'd gone to Tallahassee, and I said, listen, I get where you're coming from, says, but you guys have the evidence in hand that you're not finding cigar butts sitting in the sand. So you're not finding pipes sitting in the sand, you're finding cigarettes. So if you have something you're going to target, then target that. Because at the time, what they wanted to do was say, absolutely no smoking at all in an outdoor space. And more importantly, you were not allowed to smoke inside a state park either, 170-plus state parks. Well, the state park system, there is no recourse to combat that. It's either the state does it, and that's it. So if they got rid of preemption, gave it to the counties, then everybody in the state park will be SOL. I just enjoyed a cigar sitting near the campering in Jonathan Dixon last week for my children's birthday. You know? We were able to get an exemption that says no, non-tipped, non-filtered cigars cannot be preempted, or are still preempted to state. They cannot be regulated by the local level. Again, we're talking about outdoor spaces. So taxpaying citizens are allowed to responsibly clean up your mess. If you're littering, you should be attacked to the wall at 250 bucks apiece. But if you're responsible in cleaning up after yourself, you're not disturbing somebody else, you should be able to enjoy that product in open-air spaces that your tax dollars financed. So I was very pleased to be able to get that exemption in 2022. And it kind of makes me chuckle if you go up to Daytona and a lot of these other municipalities. They have to specifically state the exemption on their signage, if they do decide to say you cannot use vaping or you cannot use cigarettes. These are allowed to be done at the local level, but a non-tipped, non-filtered cigar cannot be regulated at the local level. And if you do decide to have a county ordinance, you have to put the signage up specifically stating that, stating that exemption. So I'm very proud of that.
Bruce, do you have a response? That's what he was doing up in DC and Tallahassee.
Okay. So as a medical practitioner, and somebody who's advocating for cigars, you'd have to imagine my other side of the coin. Okay? So, and how many people I see? So I see 15 evaluations for people a week, 15 different human beings coming to my office, and I, and I see them for who they are. So about, let's go back around six weeks ago, where somebody came in who had been smoking cigars a lot of his life, 72 years old, and throat cancer, lip cancer, cheek cancer, cancer in his cheek, and all from cigar smoke, okay, for over the periods of years. So for me, it's, it's, it's okay, Michael wants to go do that and, and finds that that's important. To me, that's, that's more on being a politician. And so that's, and I wrote a book called Senator Who. And my book came out in 2015, and I wrote it before I ran for Senate. And I said, can a regular wrote it before I ran for Senate. And I said, can a regular guy who's not a politician become a United States Senator? And obviously, it didn't happen. But there were 73 pages that I wrote, published, for the reasons of why I should be, because it's the idea that we don't do politics. Regular people just don't do politics. We want to be able to live our lives on a regular basis through what we do on a normal daily thing. When I'm out there with my animals, making sure they're saved, making sure they're eating, making sure if there's blood coming off of one, I'm going to I'm going to fix it. You know, these are things that I do for health reasons, for the people that I see every day. I make sure that they're going to be healthy, and they're going to be going back to their regular lives. I can't, I just, I don't understand making it so that your your main progress or prophecy of life is going to Tallahassee or Washington to make it so you're going to be able to smoke cigars. I mean, that's like so against everything that I live. Look, I'm going to be 64 this year. I could probably outrun most people in this room for sure.
Well, thanks, Bruce.
No, no offense. Okay. But I mean, this is what I do every day. I mean, you got to remember, I'm on the farm, if I'm moving around this much, as well as for my job, and I've got to see three people at one time a lot of times. I mean, this and my energy level, I don't have coffee. So I'll have it 2:00 this afternoon. This is my energy level like all the time. So, you know, and this is this is the kind of passion that I bring to what would be Martin County Commissioners' office. When you see all them sitting there like that on those seats, it's ridiculous. So I I'm not, you're going to see a person that's totally different from the politician that Michael's professing that he is, going there in Martin County to be the real person, the real farmer, the real father of six, which is a whole different world when you have teenage daughters, five of them. So I mean, really, that's that's a world that nobody could, that's not even wisdom. So I mean, and no, no of our forefathers, I don't think, had six children to go through their teenage years. But maybe yes, maybe no. But also to that, nobody lived past 40 years old at that time, back in those days. So there was no, there was no 80, now there was no, wisdom was at at 35. But that's not like it is now. It's just, it's changed. We've we've changed, we've morphed into a dimension that's really not very good. But we are all, we're both here. We're here to try and change it to make it so it's better for the future.
You are. We have one more question for Bruce, and then we're going to get into the public questions. Real quick, did you have anything you wanted to respond to?
I'm a firm believer, you can't let the kids outnumber the parents. I got two daughters, I love them both to death, and that is all that I need. So bless your heart, you got that's some work there, I'll tell you what.
The last question for Bruce from Michael. In previous recordings, you have stated that you have a plan to cut our debt in half. But have you said, but you've said you would not be willing to share that plan until after you are elected. Are you willing to reconsider this position and share your ideas with us today?
A specific answer to that question is no. I'm not going to answer exactly what that's for. But that's very specific to ideas that I had, again, with the county commissioner, with the Department of Agent Commissioner. And I and I had numerous countries that were on board with what I was doing, Germany and France, that knew of of the ideas that I have to help a a country or county make some money to be able to make sure they can get themselves out of debt. So as you know, you know, Germany, France, they're socialist countries, as well as Canada. Canada was another one. These these three countries are countries that were able to bring themselves at a little higher level out of debt. And that's and that's the whole idea. And it's and it has nothing to do with bringing more business in. It has nothing to do with making sure that we can build more and develop more. It's totally using, it's it's absolute utilization of the land for what it was meant to be. And that's and that's all I'm going to say. And it'll work. I mean, it'll 100% work. And we could, as governor, I would have been able to reduce our overall budget, just because we could have had this in place, to be able to make it so that we would be better.
Michael Circus, do you have a response for Bruce Nathan?
I would just say, I appreciate the candid and the honesty from you. I just, you know, we're talking about a public service position, and I tell people, it's an open book. If you had a question, I'd be happy to answer it, because I'm trying to affect a change positive here in the community. I really wish you would have shared that with everybody so they can know what they're getting before they hit the checkout counter. So that's just my point on that.
Yeah, you have to, you have to have some things in the, you know, if you got a gun, you got your six bullets, man, you got to keep some bullets in there. You can't just shoot them all out. Got to make sure that we, so come, come in August, we'll have some more conversations. I'll be here August 14th, actually. So possibly at that time, I will have that conversation at that time. So that's, that'd be the next time.
Fantastic. Again, we're speaking with Michael Circus to my left, Bruce Nathan to my right. They're both running for Martin County Commission District Five against incumbent Ed Campy. We're moving on now to public questions that were submitted ahead of this show. And the first one I'm going to ask is very pertinent to your district. It was that there was a lot that was purchased for $4 million in Palm City. A developer had it, and with Ed Campy's pushing and and support, was able to get the commission to decide to purchase that lot back from the developer. So with that being said, they want to know, what did you think of that? And now that they bought the land, what would you do with it?
Me first?
Yes.
Okay, so the idea was for that, all they would have had to do is zone it differently, instead of making, instead of leaving it as it is. So and that's and really, as county commissioners, they could have put their heads together and just zoned it differently. So it wouldn't have become this monstrosity, which it was going to become. So Campy, again, talked about this on Saturday when we saw him. And he said this is one thing he felt was the right thing to do, was to purchase it. So now the county is in more debt, because now they've purchased this. So and this, and it's just an amazing amount of things. It's a money stream that they think that they can keep taking money out of wherever they're getting it from and and purchasing this. And then his Campy said that if we didn't purchase it at that time, they'd be building right this very second. And so not it, but not if you rezoned it, and not if you switched around. You have to, that's the whole idea. You have to tweak these things to where we were. Go back to older zoning laws and not rezone everything. We have to make it so that our older zoning laws are going to come back to us. And that's, that's the idea. So that's, and that's, that's for all these yellow signs we see up all over the county for rezoning. They all have to come down and and stop it.
Michael Circus?
I think that that purchase was an absolute mistake. And I was at the county commission meeting, and I told them this. I said, this is not the way we need to go about doing this. And what really frustrates me about this is that this is a problem we knew was going to happen for well over a decade. Going back to 2012, when the CRA was extended down 714 from MAP Road, we knew that lot was going to be put into a heavy and a very dense development pattern, because that's what the CRAs do. They increase the density beyond that of the unincorporated county, even inside the urban service boundary. So we knew for 10 years this was going to be a problem. And unfortunately, our commissioners just kept kicking the ball down the field, down the field, down the field, and didn't do anything about it for a decade. And then when somebody owned the land and had every legal right to develop it under the existing development patterns, then we scrambled. And we said, hey, this is something we do not want to see. But instead of doing the job 10 years ago, when you knew it was going to be a problem, instead of addressing it then, you waited until you had zero options left, except to spend $4 million you didn't have. And when I say you didn't have it, that was the very first action taken by the Board of County Commissioners during this fiscal year. Not two weeks earlier, they had commissioners threatening to stab each other in the neck because of how contentious the budget meeting was. And the very first action we took was to spend $4 million that was not in the budget, to fix a problem we knew about for 10 years and just chose not to do the work on. So I'll tell you, we're nine months later, 10 months later, I'm still pissed off about it.
We have a few more questions. I don't think we're going to get through them all, so we'll be as quick as we can. I'd like to ask the participants if they support term limits for county commissioners and how many terms. Also, if they would support a seven commissioner commission, meaning two, there would be two at-large representatives. So I'll start with you this time, Michael.
I absolutely support term limits. The fact that we're waiting for Tallahassee to tell us that we have to do it is foolish. The city of Stewart imposed term limits on themselves at 12 years. The village of Indian Town, which is the youngest municipality in the state of Florida, has already begun discussions, although it hasn't gone anywhere. There's nothing stopping our commissioners to say, listen, two four-year terms, and we're done. We can do this on the local level. And I don't, I'm not the kind of guy that makes all these promises and whatnot that some will be achieved. But I'll tell you, what I would make part of my priorities, the very first priority set that would come up in November, after being being inaugurated, is that I'm going to bring forward an ordinance, I'm going to have staff bring forward an ordinance, and all five commissioners will go on record and say, yes, the people of Martin County can vote on whether or not they have term limits, or no, the people of Martin County can't vote on it. And at least then, all five commissioners will be forced into taking a stance on the matter. And if I have my druthers, I would say the people of Martin County vote on it.
Are you supportive of two at-large commissioners? So it'd be a seven-person commission?
No, no, I think five is more than enough. Two new members wouldn't achieve any goal, in my opinion, and it would just increase costs.
Bruce?
Agreed. So we, two limits, two terms, so that's it. If you can't get your stuff done in two terms, then you're not going to get it done at all. Basically, that's the bottom line. So a lot of times, you should be able to get government stuff done in one term in four years. Sometimes there's a bleed over. So sometimes you might need to go further. And it becomes the people's choice if they want you to stay in or not. So for where we are right now, with Campy and Smith, you know, I think they're, the people are not given a whole lot of choice, except for us right now, right here. But for Smith, you know, he's trying to knock everybody else out of his corner, doing the best he can. Because, you know, seven, seven terms, going to a seventh term, he's got no place else to go. He loses his job. He's got no job. You know, he's going to go on unemployment. So that's, and that's it. So so but that's, you know, and that's, it's really bad what he's doing to Vargas. That's really, it's just, it's not fair. For, and we've met her, and I think she's a viable candidate. So and to answer your question about the, no, St. Lucie County has seven commissioners. It's a disaster up there with those seven commissioners. So yeah, no, five commissioners is plenty, plenty.
For you, Bruce, I think one of the big questions for them is where do they stand on the rural lifestyle and the comprehensive plan? Can rural lifestyle be turned back, and would you turn it back?
Well, it's an interesting amendment that these guys decided to just write up and put forward and have Doug Smith sign, and then Sarah Woods and all the other people sign it and say, this is a great thing, not a great thing. So what happened with that is, you know, it allows for, let's just say, golf courses. So that's not, rear, a rural lifestyle, a rural place, is is taking these 18 holes and making it so that we now have a whole new area. And then and then how they partition off, you know, how many can live in each little section, and and put it like that. But but the whole idea here is, now you've taken this specific to Newfield. So we've taken this beautiful, beautiful plush green land, which had, I mean, thousands of animals on it. We've now mowed it down, we've now displaced and killed thousands of animals. Okay. Again, for people who are just tuning in, I own, I have over 300 animals on my rescue farm at home. So animals are like priority to me. Environment is priority to me. So the rural lifestyle is a fool, because it wasn't really meant to be rural lifestyle. It's meant to make it so that Kiplinger is, has a way about him to make it so that his, his bill would pass through the Martin County Commissioners, and make it so that they could then have it so that he could have his Newfield. And that's, that's the whole reason for the rural lifestyle. But I'm, I'm against the rural lifestyle, as, you know, because it's just, it's almost like those propositions they put on there, you know, for an amendment, whatever, and yes really means no, and no means yes. So we've seen that before. We've all seen how that works in the in the capacity of trying to vote for something. And we want to make it so that this rural lifestyle is turned back. And and let's, if we're going to have rural lifestyle, let's have a real rural lifestyle, not one that's made up by the county commissioner.
We're running down on time. Evan, make sure to let me know when there's five minutes left, please. And Michael, I'll go to you with this.
I'll start on the back end real quick and say, yes, rural lifestyle can be turned back. Any amendment that's been put in can always be reverted backwards. So there's nothing to stop that from happening. I do want to clear the air on a couple of things. So rural lifestyle was not created for the the Newfield plan. Newfield was long in existence and approved as a PUD long before rural lifestyle was even conceived. Rural lifestyle was conceived instead for the Becker Plan, which is a discovery plan on Bridge Road down in Hope Sound. And I'll tell you, the original rural lifestyle that required properties to be butted up to the urban service boundary, and does not allow for any density higher than the already allowed density, instead allowing for the clustering of density, because you have to kiss on to the urban services boundary, I found that to be a reasonable plan. We have to have some level of incremental growth. If we want to retain green space inside the urban service boundary, you have to have some type of incremental growth on the peripheries. So I thought the original rural lifestyle was actually a fairly well-conceived plan. I didn't like the manner in which it went through. And the fact that we've now extended that to be a mile outside the urban service boundary completely obliterates that incremental ideology. So rural lifestyle is nothing like it was conceived to be. And the manner in which it came through is not something I'm a fan of. I would like to see it reverted back to touching the urban services boundary, and again, keeping that incremental plan in place.
Michael, this question was specifically for you. You've done a commendable job focusing on the need to prioritize projects during the county budgeting process. However, many examples go back 10 to 15 years, when, like the rest of the state nation, we're in a severe depression. For decades, public revenue forecasting at all government levels were based on the assumption that Florida real estate values would rise indefinitely. The 2008 collapse of real estate market had severe impacts on county revenues. If you'd been serving on the county commission in 2009 to 13, would you have accepted the infrastructure funds provided under the Obama stimulus that enabled the construction of the new Palm City Bridge and completion of major phases of septic-to-sewer conversions?
So the Palm City Bridge is something that had been wanted in the community for 20 something years. I remember in high school trying to cross over the old Palm City Bridge, when I was the only one in town, and it's a parking lot for an hour at a time. It was ridiculous to try to get across into Palm City from Stewart. So the bridge was needed, without a doubt. The problem with the infrastructure money is that we were promised $60 million, and the bridge turned out to be almost 90. And then immediately after the bridge was open, we were told it's an evacuation route. So we had to double 714 from two lanes into four lanes, heading out to the turnpike. So that infrastructure package had so many downhill costs that were not anticipated to begin with. If I knew then, knowing now that it would be twice as expensive, no, I would not have taken the money. Having said that, in 2009, when they said, hey, listen, here's 60 million, the bridge is going to cost 60 million, I'll tell you, I'd probably say yes. And that's a good learning lesson that we need to be digging deeper into these grants and thinking long and hard about downhill costs and the backside cost before accepting it, because we're seeing time and time again that what's promised up front is not what comes up on the backside.
Bruce, I'll let you weigh in on that question as well.
Well, in that, in that specific instance, because I wasn't here back in the time when we were a wooden bridge, and so and what happened there. So my knowledge on that is definitely not as much. And so and I don't, I don't see that as being a specific need for where we are today in Martin County, and what has to happen in the near future. So I'm gonna, you only have a little time left, so I'm going to divert that.
It is, it's going quickly. Somebody would like to know your candidate, the candidate's position, and this is for you, Bruce, on the Stewart Brightline station.
Well, it's easy enough. So in 2016, I sat as running for Senate in the Chamber House with the president of Brightline. And what he was going to do was going to make it so that all of our crossings were going to be very secure. There wasn't going to be any openings for any crossings. Well, now here we are, 2024, the crossings are terrible. Okay, they, they haven't done anything. They haven't stepped up to the, to the plate. So I have no reason to believe Brightline is going to do anything for us. I do not think we need a station here. We do not need to spend the money on the station here. I think we need to, you know, just, you know, let Brightline go through and let them fix what they say they were going to fix first.
I'll let you weigh in, and then we're going to go into our closing statements. We're going to let the Facebook Live run in case we do run out of time here on the radio show. So it'll be on the Facebook Live. But go ahead with the Brightline.
You know, if Brightline wants to build a station, Brightline should be building the station. It shouldn't be taxpayer-funded. I don't think that the county and the city should be giving the land over to the state, or the county shouldn't be giving land to the city for the city to give land over to Brightline. It just turns into this whole swap of assets and values that belong to the taxpayers. So if a private industry wants to build their station, they can buy the land from the county, they can buy the land from the city, they can build a parking garage on their dime, they can build a train station, they can do these things. I'm not opposed to that. I don't think we should be giving them one red cent.
Closing statements, they have two minutes each. Michael Circus, you go first from the quarter.
Yeah, I've been able to share my message. I would encourage everybody to follow me on Facebook, Michael Circus for District Five, because that's, that's really my main communication, to tell people who I am and what I'm doing. You get a more in-depth idea of who I am. I would just say that throughout the afternoon, you know, Bruce, I'm flattered that that you would think I'm as politically savvy as I am, because this is something I do for fun. This is something I'm doing for two or three hours a week, because I'm concerned about what the future's going to look like for my children. And, you know, you're right, cigar advocacy probably isn't the the most effective use of time in one's life. But when I think about the fact that when you have something that's important to you, you stand up for it, and the individual rights and individual liberties that people shouldn't be told how they're going to live their lives and how and be dictated to, you know, I'm proud of that stance. So I mean, I know you didn't mean that as a dig, but I just want to point out that I have absolutely no qualms about that. And so I've been to Tallahassee three times, maybe four times in the last six years. All my DC advocacy is done remotely. Senator Marco Rubio's field office in Palm Beach Gardens, I can go on a lunch break while I'm swinging a hammer for an hour. So I mean, it's, a lot of these things that can be achieved by somebody, and we have this image in our head of politicians that isn't realistic. I'm, I'm not some, some politician. I go in sweaty, dirty, covered in concrete, and I can still affect change and positive change for my community. So I would just simply say once again, that, you know, going back to why I'm qualified for this position, you know, I got the history behind me, because I've been doing the work for five years. I've been doing this work for six years, and I've been doing it for free with almost no resources. So if I had the opportunity to sit in an office on Monterey 40 hours a week, and I had staff, you know, I don't want to say at my disposal, because I don't mean they're disposable. But if I had staff readily available to assist with getting projects implemented, if I could be mildly successful doing this as a volunteer, I could be wildly successful from doing it, you know, as an actual job.
And Bruce Nathan?
So Bruce Nathan, as a commander, as a veteran through the 320th, and and joining the military after 9/11, because I felt that's the time to give back and make sure that people understand that we need to fight for America. So as Michael states, individual rights are okay, I did it on the, on the bigger level, just like I always do. So it's, it's very important to me that to make sure that people understand that if you